If you would, Mr. Clerk, would you redo our roll call? We've already had our invocation and pledge of allegiance, just for the record.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, that's a, I appreciate that, and we'll call the roll one more time. Commissioner Crankman. Commissioner Greg Young is absent. Commissioner Thomas is-
Present.
Present. Commissioner John Paul Young.
Here.
Commissioner Burrell.
Here.
Commissioner Jones is absent. Commissioner Gage Was.
Present.
Commissioner Blake.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Cothran.
Here.
Commissioner Lazarus.
Here.
And Commissioner Epperson.
Present.
Okay, you have 10 of 12 commissioners present, two absent, and that does constitute a quorum.
Thank you so much.
And of course, you have already mentioned we have received the invocation and pledge today. So that brings us to agenda additions. I'm not aware of any agenda additions for today unless you have any.
No, sir, I do not have any. Next item, please.
Then that brings us to citizens' comments where, just like before, citizens are able to submit a request to comment, and those comments are limited to three minutes. We have not received any at this time. So if it is okay with you, we will move forward to visitors.
That will be great, thank you.
Okay.
Our first visitor.
The first visitor today is a scheduled visit from Russell Adams or a representative from the Louisiana State Fair. And I believe they're making their way up now.
Hi, I'm Russell Adams. I'm a marketing director for the State Fair of Louisiana, and I want to first of all thank the Cattle Parish Commission for letting me come and talk to you guys today, and also want to thank you for all your support, that y'all give the State Fair every year, that's much appreciated.
Welcome, Mr. Adams.
Oh, great, well, so the fair established in 1906, and kind of putting things in perspective, that was only 41 years after the Civil War ended and six years before the Titanic sunk and eight years before World War I broke out. So said that to just kind of put things in perspective. That the fair has been around for a very long time. It's more of an institution, in my opinion, than just a little carnival that shows up in the parking lot and stays a little while and then packs up and leaves. There's so much that the fair does for the community. We, last impact study we did was $24 million economic impact on the area here, and that's been several years back. So we're looking at getting another one done, updated, and I would imagine it's going to be quite a bit more than that once we get the new study done. So the fair opens October 30th. It runs through November the 16th, and the hours 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on weekdays, 11:00 to 10:00 on weekends. And right now, we've got discounted tickets on sale for the State Fair at Brookshire Super 1 and Spring Markets, as well as statefairlouisiana.com. We always do that every year, and then these discounts will go away the day before the fair opens. So once the fair opens up, the advanced discount tickets will go away, and that stops. However, we do have discounts that will continue, discount days throughout the fair. Opening day is going to be a $5 admission, and then parking's going to be free the entire fair. And then we've got a couple of family days, which is kind of new this year. It's going to be November the 5th on a Wednesday and November the 13th in $28 armbands and 8.50 gated admission. So, and then opening, of course, opening day's $5, and then we have some weekday discounts as well. So new this year, we've got four VIP experiences, which we're really proud of. Other fairs do this around the country. One is we're offering birthday parties for kids, which is getting some traction on our website. People are interested in that because we've got packages available for that. And Build a Midway Mate, which is kind of like Build a Bear, but if y'all have heard of that before, and that's a couple of things we do for the kids. And then Glitz and Grits, which is a kind of a private VIP party prior to the rodeo that we do on November the 1st and 2nd. So on November 1st, Saturday night, from 4:30 to 6:30, we'll have catered drinks and live music for kind of a VIP party before the rodeo starts. And then the Latino Day VIP Experience is going to be on the 15th of November, which is prior to the Latino Day, and that's something that Vida Rana with 318 Latino helps us with every year, and she does a fabulous job with it. So then we're doing a food crawl, which we've done that before, and the food crawl is 11 vendors on the midway. You pay like $50, $59 that you pay. And that includes a t-shirt. You get to visit nine or 11 food vendors there. Get your gated mission, you get a t-shirt. So there's some things like that. Other fairs have been doing this. We're beginning to incorporate some ideas from other fairs around the country and to make ours better out there. So one of the, we've got some special days at the fair. The, on the 15th, it's Latino Day, and that's always very popular. We've got some big-name bands from Mexico actually come up. And to be honest with you, I'd never heard of them, couldn't tell you anything about them. But again, Vida Rana with 318 Latino says, you know, she's from Mexico, and she says these are big-name bands that come up, and it draws a lot, a lot of the Latino community out of the fair, and it's a lot of fun and seeing the activities they do. And the, it's just, it's just a good event for families to come out and enjoy. And then on the last day of the fair, which is the 16th, the Veterans and Military Appreciation Day. I want to thank Mr. Epperson for all that he does to help us put the parade together. And it's the way we say thank you for serving, thank you for keeping, keeping us free and being able to come out and, and do what we do at the fair and be able to go to church and worship. And we just, you know, we, we really don't want to take our military and veterans for granted. They do a lot for us to really keep, keep us free. I mean, you look at other countries around the world, and we, we really have it good here. And we just want to, that's our way of saying thank you, and again, thank you, Mr. Epperson, for what you do. And then following, I kind of call it the God and Family Day because we're following that at 4:00 p.m. The parade starts at 2:00, following that at 4:00 p.m. We have Faith at the Fair on our main stage. Word of God Ministries here in Shreveport. This is their third year to come out and host that for us. And they do a great job presenting the gospel through worship, music, and presenting a good message for fairgoers. So I want to encourage you all, the last day of the fair is really, really a good day, fun day, and I want to invite everybody to come out for that. And the military and veterans, active military and veterans, they get in free and their families with their military ID. So I want to make sure that y'all were aware of that. And then we've got about eight free attractions and shows on the midway. That's free with the gated mission. Got some really good shows up and down the midway. We stagger those so they don't overlap, so you can come out and just go from one show to the next and, and not miss anything. And one, I'm not going to list them all because it's a lot there, but we've got a magic show, a big top circus. Of course, the State Fair Zoo. And then we've got the thrill show, which is motorcycles riding on high wires and some really crazy stuff that'll keep you on the edge of your seat. So, and then we've got Dallas, the Fire Guy, Nick the Escape Artist. They've, they've been at the fair before, but it's been several years, but they're coming back this year, and they do a really good job. They're a street act, we've got three of those out there. So there's, and you know, a total dozen, a dozen shows that won't cost you anything to come out and you can be entertained. And again, if you get there before 3 o'clock on a weekday, doesn't cost you to get in. So that's a nice, nice deal there. And we've got over 30 concerts on our main stage this year. I'm not going to list the bands because there's too many of them, but you can look at our website, statefairlouisiana.com, and it's got all our music schedules and everything on there. And then our carnival operator, Tally Amusements, is coming back from, from the Fort Worth area. They do the Texas State Fair in Dallas. They do Ohio State Fair. They do a big one in San Diego. So it's a big market kind of carnival operator. They bring the first-class rides in. It's all color-coordinated with the food booths and the games and things. The LED lights is just something spectacular that you see that they dress up the rides with, and they'll landscape their area, the carnival area, with plants and flowers and shrubs. And it's just really a very first-class operation. We've stepped it up when carnival, when tallies came in with the carnival to do the same thing in our area. And half the fair really is the carnival, half of it we control. And so we, we started sprucing our area up and doing more landscaping. And just, we, we've got a very clean fair now. We, we keep the, the grounds very clean. People constantly picking up trash and everything. So we just want a good atmosphere, a good family atmosphere where people can come out, have fun, and enjoy the fair. So, and then what I won't miss the rodeo. Opening weekend is the LRCA Finals Rodeo. That stands for the Louisiana Cowboys and Rodeo Association. And it's kind of a regional rodeo. We've got Louisiana cowboys and cowgirls. They come from Mississippi, Texas, Arkansas, and Oklahoma. We've actually had a couple in the rodeo from Florida and Alabama over that direction. And riders ride all year long, and they qualify for the finals. And the finals happen, will happen at the State Fair every year, and that's opening weekend, November 1st. We've got two, two rodeos on November 1st, 1:00 p.m. And 7:00 p.m. And on November 2nd, we have a rodeo at 3:00 p.m., which is the last one. And then they tally up all the scores for those three and announce the winners on Sunday afternoon. And then the livestock show we do is one of the largest livestock shows in the state. The, the Junior Livestock Show's opening weekend. It brings in kids from all over the state of Louisiana. A lot come up from Calcasieu Parish around the Lake Charles area, Rapids Parish around Alexandria is a big, big area that kids participate. So it's a very, very big show. It's one of the biggest, if not the biggest livestock show in the state. And then that ends Wednesday, November the 5th, which is when our Junior Livestock Sale takes place. All the kids move their animals out. Then we have a lot of open shows between the 5th and on through the end of the fair. That Brahma Shows, Longhorns, other things, other shows that will take place. And they're, they're a lot of fun to watch, and I would encourage you to stop by and see the livestock. And last year, the livestock sale on, on that Wednesday for the kids raised over $400,000, and those kids actually put that in their pocket, and they were able to use it for college or whatever. They, livestock teaches a lot. And if you ever watch KTBS Racing Louisiana, the program they do, Rick Rowe is very involved with that. And it's a really good show, and it kind of tells you all the life skills that these kids learn by raising these animals, and it teaches a lot of responsibility. And it's just, it's just really good. 4H and FFA is really good organizations for these kids there. And then safety and security policies, we continue to double down on that. We've had no problems on the midway for the last two years. And I want to thank the Shreveport Police, Cattle Parish Sheriff Deputies, and City Marshal's Office for all their help and support. And then we've got a couple of private security companies that, that come out as well. And we've got a lot of policies, a lot of clearback policy, curfew for kids that can't, after 6 o'clock, we can't have a bunch of kids in the, the fair unless they have a chaperone. So that's important to, to know that. So parents, you can't just drop your kids off and leave and come back and pick them up at closing time because we do have that curfew, curfew in place. And so that's a big deal. Clearback policy's fairly new to the fair, and we've implemented that as well. And then we've got a list of non-approved items, and all that's on our website. And again, we, you know, we've talked to other fairs. We've done our homework, looked at a lot of things that other fairs are doing, and we're implementing a lot of those good ideas here with our State Fair to make it even better. So I want to invite everybody to come out this year, have fun at the fair, and I appreciate the time to talk to you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. We appreciate that presentation. I have a couple of questions, and I see that there are a few that are on the board. We're excited about supporting the Louisiana State Fair. It's one of our biggest festivals here in North Louisiana, and I would be amiss not to mention that our Commissioner, Vice President Epperson, who hosts the largest veteran celebration parade in the state of Louisiana. And so we're very proud, and that does deserve an applause to you because we thank you for everything that you do. I had a couple of questions about how this new information is being disseminated to our communities about the curfew with the age is on it for the 6 o'clock p.m. and the clear backpack policy.
Well, we, you know, we, we talk that up to the media. They come out, and I'm the actual media spokesperson for the State Fair, and I, I do bring it up and encourage people to go to our website because there's a lot of information there about our safety and security policies. But that's really what we do, and we do press releases. That, we just sent one out the other day that had, it was just reminding everybody the fair's coming, ticket prices, things like that. And then I had a media, actually an information packet that I put together, and all that information's in the information packet. So we tend to depend on the media to help us with it, and we talk it up to, you know, to go to your website because also tallies, amusements, you know, they have rules about rides, the height, you've got to be a certain height to get on certain rides.
Yes.
All of that information is, is, we, we actually will be linked from our website to the tallies' website. So we, you know, we're just encouraging people to do their homework before they come, and we don't produce any TV ads actually specifically going in because there's so much here.
Yeah, that's a lot, it's a lot that you share with us, and I, I think all of the information is advantageous for us to share with the public. I would just ask that if you could get that information to our clerk and maybe work with our communications director, maybe there's something that we could share there as well. And I'm sure they will individually be sharing it with our constituents. Very important information.
I'll be happy to send that, that media packet.
Yes.
We can send it to Mr. Epperson, I guess, or, 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 we've got your email address, that's why I mentioned.
That'll be fine, and he'll get it to the clerk.
Okay.
I thank you so much. I have a few commissioners who also want to share some comments or sentiments.
Sure.
Parliamentarian Victor Thomas.
Thank you, how you doing, Russell?
I'm doing good, thank you.
Once again, thank y'all so much for what you do and all the work that goes into planning the fair. I'm glad to see that y'all each year try to make sure that you increase our security protocols to make it a safe and clean, fun, and entertaining fair. I also wanted to applaud you guys for the things that y'all do outside of the fair. I know y'all took it really hard during the pandemic, but I want to applaud y'all because y'all have literally bounced back tenfold. Anytime I'm there, and Rob, and Ashley, and Ms. Lisa always make sure that they provide excellent customer service for many events that we do throughout the year. And I just wanted the public to know that y'all do have these amenities onsite and on the grounds. I know we just saw a successful car show there. There are so many different other events that happen on the fairgrounds, and I just want you to talk a little bit more about that and what's available for use, for public use.
Well, we've got buildings, some pretty nice buildings here. Of course, they're older buildings, but like the Louisiana Land Ag Building, where we do the Ag Magic during the fair, the Louisiana Agriculture, LSU Ag. LSU Ag, so it takes that over. That's the building where, I was the boat show manager for seven years, leading, that's what got me out to the fair. I brought the boat show to the fair, and then Mr. Giordano hired me to do the marketing back in 2013 for the fair. So we did seven boat shows out there. So we, we got the facilities. That building's got good air conditioning, restroom facilities and everything. And we used to do some really good boat shows. We did seven of them out there until the COVID came around and made a few changes to our situation. But then we've got an exhibit building. Now, the Hirsch Coliseum is, is the Mudbugs. That's, you know, Georgia's pond, that's controlled by the Mudbugs. Now, even though it's, it's a building that we lease to them, but that's a good facility. I know things take place in the Hirsch, and you would talk to Mr. Scott Musket anytime you want to book anything with that. But there's many, many acres out there that we do lease it out, or rent space, very affordable. And there's been companies that have put up tents and stages and actually done full-blown events on our parking lot. All they did was rent the parking lot, and then they, they brought in all their own, stuff like you were talking about, the car show. So there's, you know, there's a lot of things like that, but that's kind of where we are with, with what's available, you know, outside the State Fair.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Commissioner Roy Burrell.
Thank you, Madam President. Russell, glad to have you here.
Thank you very much.
You know, I've represented that area since 1996.
Oh, okay.
And I've worked with the late Sam Giordano to try to improve it and Chris.
You do go back a few years, yeah.
And now Robert. As a matter of fact, the State Fair was founded at the same time our fraternity was founded, 1906, you said, didn't you?
1906, yes.
06. And that's, that's, that's quite a while.
Yeah, yes, sir.
And, and the State Fair really has been a good partner for that community. As I said, I've represented it now almost 30 years. And it's been a great economic engine and, and order, and also a catalyst for economic development for the community. We've worked in conjunction with them to do revitalization initiatives with the Queensborough Community, Warner Park, Motown, Ingleside. All those are surrounding that State Fair, and we've done a lot of work in conjunction with it. And it's, it's been a good anchor business along with Willis Nighting to improve that area. And it has also improved the aesthetic, the aesthetics for Greenwood Road because Greenwood Road used to be a terrible-looking place, and we were able to get out and, and plant trees and stuff along that stretch. And it also improved the police security in that area because when you have anchors like that in that area, it brings more police officers in that area.
Yes, sir.
I think we've done real well in that part of Queensborough especially.
Yes, sir.
In terms of security. So again, I've spoken with Robert Brazil and to lend my support. And as was mentioned before, we just had a very successful car show. Over 5,000 people attended. That's a lot for a car show. And, and no incidents. So, so I know that it can be a safe place. I know we get some sort of, you know, sometimes this negative perception that that is not a safe area, but it's, it's rather safe if people are minding their business. Let's put it that way. So again, I look forward to working with you all further on improving the area and calling me when you need it.
All right, thank you for, for saying that. I do appreciate that. And our staff is very small out there compared to other fairs. We just have a handful of us that put that fair together. We all wear multiple hats. So I'd like to give Kurt, Rob, and the staff a plug here, if I may, on how good a job they do. They work around the clock pretty much. Rob spends several nights a week up there. He lives in Arcadia, so he doesn't drive back and forth every night. He, he works all the time right now, and they've done a fabulous job of being able to, to do the upgrades. We've done new painting. We're adding a bunch of lights to the livestock area. We've been doing a lot of upgrades, bathrooms, a new gate. Our front main gate has been repainted this year. So there's a lot of things that they're doing and that we're doing that the public may not notice, or they may notice, but it's going to be a pretty, pretty fair with everything that we do.
One other thing, Madam Chair.
You still have the floor.
My ultimate goal is for you all to have a permanent amusement park there. A city our size should have an amusement park. You can go to East Texas right there, you'll see several amusement parks along there. And I think it would be a great opportunity for us to have that, to have something year-round.
That would be nice, to have something year-round, I agree.
We'll work on that.
Okay.
I second that motion. I had great days at Hamels Park when they were here.
Yeah.
But yeah, thank you for recognizing your team because oftentimes, people see how beautiful the duck looks on top of the water, but they don't see all of that footwork that's going on beneath. So it's important to always recognize your team. No one does it alone, so thank you for seeing that.
That's right, it takes a whole team of us to, to pull that off.
Absolutely. Commissioner John Paul Young.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Adams, thank you so much for being here. I'm excited to hear about the, all the events at the fair this year. Could you remind us which day is Glitz and Grits?
Glitz and Grits is going to be November the 1st, and it's going to be leading into the, the 7:00 p.m. rodeo. So the hours of Glitz and Grits is 4:30 to 6:30. And that, tickets are just right about $100, which is going to include the catering, the drinks, the live band, box seats at the rodeo. And you can look at our website, it's, it's on our website, and all of our VIP days are on there and all the details.
Terrific, that one sounded like a lot of fun to me. I also wanted to know, would you, or do you have appointments already to talk about the fair on the radio in advance of the opening day of the fair?
Yeah, I typically go on TV and radio. I get a lot of support when the, we get a little closer. I've already been talking to some of the media. I was at Channel 3 the other day and talking to them. So they're, they're very supportive. We get great support from all the TV and radio stations. And I've been on Kiel, and I've been on, you know, some of the radio stations. TV's been, Rick Rowe comes out just about every year and does some of his segments out there. Opening day, I'm out there at 4 o'clock waiting for them to show up to do their morning, and I've had all three TV stations out there doing their morning cut-ins. And my job is to get, get them some good TV lined up. So I get the attractions, I get a guy from the circus juggling, I might get the magician doing a magic show, or some kids from the livestock. Kay over in the Altech part of the livestock show, she's my contact, and she can get some kids up early out there with animals. So that's what I do, and I get it all scheduled. They give me the times of their hits, and, and then we get everything scheduled and get some good entertainment for their television. I want them to have good TV, I want people to watch and get excited about the fair.
Fantastic, all right, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Look forward to seeing you at the fair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Vice President Ken Epperson.
Thank you for coming, Russell. As Commissioner Burrell stated, that's a tremendous potential for a very strong and consistent and year-round economic and entertainment entity at the State Fairgrounds. And I think these are some things that we are going to be putting on the table in the very near future in collaboration with the State Fair Board and pretty sure Ms. Burrell and the other elected and appointed officials within that area. Just for a, a note, you take from Clug Pine Road West of I-20, there are 17 hotels between there and the State Fairgrounds.
Wow.
Potential, the potential is there.
Yes.
And these are some things that we plan on expounding on and making sure that, that particular piece of property, which would be a vital, consistent economic entity to Cattle Parish, not only during the time of State Fair, but throughout the year. Just want to have a note to the people to know that this year, we're going to have two centenarian veterans of World War II. One turned 100 years old January the 15th of 2025 of this year. A United States Navy Vet, he will be honored. And the other is Mr. Sam Maddox. Good Lord bless him on September the 27th to turn 106 years old. So please come out and support those veterans. Lieutenant Governor Billy Nungesser has given us an ample supply of shrimps and catfish that we will be featuring at our staging area for all the persons that are going to participate in the State Fair on the west side of Independent Stadium. So come out and make sure we enjoy it and have a good, fun time for all of Cattle Parish and our families. Thank you, sir. That's Sunday, November the 16th, at, at the staging of the Veterans Parade, the west side of Independent Stadium.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. I do believe that will conclude our comments, and we look forward to seeing you at the state fair.
Great, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Okay, and as Mr. Adams takes his seat, our next visit is from Mr. Milton Carroll of High Risk Behavior Prevention. And as he makes his way up, I believe he, we have distributed copies of his presentation, and he does have a presentation.
All right, welcome, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to the commission.
Absolutely.
Okay. My name is Milton Carroll, and I'm the founder of High Risk Behavior Prevention. I served for 17 years at the Caddo Parish Coroner's Office as a death investigator. With that job, I was required to respond to sites of homicides, suicides, natural deaths also, and carry out investigations that led finding out what the cause of death was. Also served with the fire department before that, and before that was with the Marine Corps. After serving with the coroner's office while I was in, I investigated during that time over 16,000 death cases. 600 were homicides, 400 were accidents, over 200, I'm sorry, over 400 were accidents, and over 200 suicides, that's what it should have read. So after investigating all these cases, what I started seeing were common factors that were involved in the homicides that we were having. And so after seeing the common factors, I developed the High Risk Behavior Prevention Program. And this program is designed to use real-life experiences from the perspective of the death investigator to open the student eyes to the alarming rate that preventable deaths occur and give them a smart, and help them make smart decisions regarding decision-making skills. So in the school system here, we're losing so many students. I've spoken to one of the principals, and he's told me that since he's been in office, he's lost over 40 students. Forty students, that's a great number. I worked the graveyard shift for those 17 years, so I saw we're calling the names that he was giving me. And I, you know, it's like, yeah, you're right, you did, you have lost these number of students. So the thing is, is that what I'm trying to do is gain the partnership of the commission to be able to come into these schools and give the kids life skills. Now, what I see is that a lot of our kids are not prepared for what they face. Over the years, I've participated with Volunteers of America, which carried on the conflict resolution class for students that were removed from the school for fighting and other things. And so from everything that I would see was constantly was that they just don't have life skills. You know, we've taught them to say no, and yes, they could say no to drugs and everything, but what happens after that? So what I was seeing was that they didn't have the exit skills to remove themselves from those situations. So what would happen is that they find themselves standing there like a deer in the headlights. Okay, I said no, now what? So that's one of the key factors involved in the presentation, is giving the kids practical exit skills that they can use and so-called save face with their friends at the same time. Because to them, that's the number one thing, what do my friends think of me? How's this, how am I gonna look after I leave or if I leave? So we give them exit strategies to remove themselves from these situations. Now, through a partnership with you, I'd be able to present to more schools, prevent and reduce involvement of criminal and risky behavior and accidents, and show the parents that the commission invests in prevention, not just reacting to social issues. Tragedies that often happen often tie up our first responders and our EMS. And I got, I've had 17 years of seeing the manpower that goes behind one call. And we're gonna talk about that in a minute. Matter of fact, we're gonna talk about the savings, dollars that the taxpayers will receive by prevention. Now, when we start talking about responding to scenes of homicide, suicides, and accidents, first of all, you're gonna have two to three patrol cars setting up a perimeter. And usually that runs about three hours. You're gonna have the detectives that are gonna come out also, usually it's two of them. And then you'll end up having a CSI team that's gonna come in and photograph. So usually these scenes last up to anywhere from three or four hours. Fire department will respond, so you got the EMS truck, which has the paramedic and assistant EMT, and usually the pumper unit's gonna be there. So that's a four-man crew, not to mention the coroner's office that shows up and the transportation and the autopsy that's gonna be required by law. Because if it's a traumatic death, suicide, homicide, by law, an autopsy has to be carried out on the death. So these are things that prevention will cut directly and will directly impact taxpayers' funds. It's gonna prevent this right here. Now, just to give an idea of, when we start talking about the students, I just want to give an idea of what's invested in students, you know? As a parent, we raise these kids from birth to 18. And as you know, money is time, time is money. So if we start accounting for the number of hours invested in raising a child, from birth to 18, multiply those hours by minimum wage, account for medical, dental, clothing, hobbies, sports, graduation, birthday, vacation, and then account for what the school board invests in them, which is about $5,500 a year for 12 years, which adds up to $66,000. By the time the child graduates from high school in a single home, it's right at $2 million. $2 million. So just think of it this way, if you had a $2 million business, would you take two to three hours a year to have training for your employees to make sure that you have longevity in your business? It's no different with our students. They're an investment, you know? And I know as a parent, we don't sit down and tally everything up, but this is just to give you an idea of what we invest in our students. Now, I went blank, I'm sorry. So like I said, this is what's invested in them. Now, anything that, now can you imagine having something worth $2 million? I'm sure if we do, we're gonna get it insured, we're gonna get a warranty on it to ensure protection. And for our students, the protection comes in the form of education. You know, we have fire drills to ensure that they live, we have tornado drills. Now we're doing mass shooter drill? Okay, we need to start having these life skill classes right along with it. Because not everybody goes home to a safe environment every weekend or every night. And a lot of time, their death is just a matter of one decision, you know? So during these presentations, we're not only encouraging them to make the right decision, but we encourage and give them tactics to be able to take care of their friends also and pull them away from those situations. Because it's amazing, before a lot of these homicides take place, the first thing the shooter does is goes to another friend, so-called friend, and they tell them what happened. Then the friend goes, man, I wouldn't let them get away with that. So the next thing you know, now you got both of them in the car on the way to a shooting or some other incident. So so often, when we investigate these cases, we find out that before a person commits these acts, it's almost like they run it through somebody else to get their approval. Now, we can start changing the thought pattern of friends and things, and they start saying, no, man, it ain't worth it. You know, let it go, let them slide, and pull them away from those situations. So many of these incidents will never happen. And with your permission, I just want to do a small portion of my presentation, is that all right?
We're good, we're good on that? Thank you.
Now, I'm gonna talk to you, and I expect for y'all to talk back to me, okay? How many of y'all have ever attended a funeral before? Let me see your hands. So that's pretty much everybody in here. Now, we know what these letters stand for, right? What does it stand for? Rest in peace. Okay, the next time you see these letters, what do you think? R, death is real? I, death is irreversible? P, death is permanent? Say that with me, death is real?
Death is real.
Death is irreversible?
Death is irreversible.
Death is permanent?
Death is permanent.
Now, just think back to your teenage years when you were in high school. That was the last thing on your mind, is death. You know, teens, they don't think about that, all they think about is the good time. You know, especially if they're a senior. But during this presentation, we get them to think about the choices that they're making. Now, these are just some of the teen, a few of the teenage victims here in Caddo Parish that we've lost within the last two years. Now, so often, what they call fun ends up being death in disguise. Now, in high school, you know, when people are seniors, they feel entitled to get involved in high-risk behavior during certain times, graduation, prom, birthday. You know, they yell YOLO, YOLO live once. And they feel like, hey, I gotta pass to try the drugs and get involved in other high-risk behavior. But like I tell them, YOLO, you only die once too. So you gotta make sure that you're making the right decision. Now, in average, globally, in average, every day, 150,000 people die. 50,000 of those deaths due to homicides, suicides, and accidents. So that means that 50,000 deaths happen every day because of poor and bad decision-making. Now, just to give your eyes an idea of what 50,000 looks like, everybody's been to Independent Stadium, right?
Yes.
Now, can you imagine that number of people dying every day because they made a bad decision or because they're hanging out with the wrong person? That's a lot of death that can be prevented. Now, who do we have here? How'd he die? Overdose. Who do we have here? How'd he die? Overdose. Who do we have here? Heath Ledger. How'd he die? And don't say Batman killed him. How'd he die? Overdose. Paul Walker. Car crash. These ladies right here. Amen? Overdose. So the reason I just showed you that, rich, poor, black, white, the only thing that depth respect is you making the right decision. Not 99% of the time, because that 1% time will cost you your life. And each time people get involved in high-risk behavior, just like playing Russian roulette, sticking that one round in the chamber, spinning, and just pulling the trigger, pulling the trigger. Eventually, you're gonna get what's in there. So my four Ts are take time to think. You know, we always hear the saying, being your brother or your sister keeper. Everybody pretty much knows what that means, right? That means that you've got your sister, your brother's back. And that don't mean that you're getting into the fight with them, but that means that, hey, I care about you enough to grab your coat tail and remove you from the situation. And a lot of time, this is what it's gonna take. Because people today, they don't fight. They do not fight, they shoot. So just as easily, you just grab your so-called friend, he's really your friend, you're gonna grab him and go. Because I can't tell you the number of times we've investigated homicides, and I talked to the witness. First thing they tell me, man, something told me to get him to go. Talk to the other friend that's there, man, something told me to get all three of them to go. So there's always warning before those pivotal moments. And it always shows up. So we need to make sure that if you're around in a situation and you get that feeling you need to go, go. Find out what happened the next day, you don't have to be there. Now, common factors involved in the homicides. In 2024, Shreveport had 59 homicides. Eighty-five percent occurred between 11:00 PM and 4:30 AM. So that was my shift. So a lot of times, as teenagers, when the parents are telling, hey, you need to be in by 10: and they feel like the parents are trying to keep them away from having fun. And it's like, no, your parents are trying to protect you. And a good example I always use is that, you know, when schools start, everybody's always get the brand-new kicks, got the new shoes. Now, if your parents ask you to go out there and mow the yard or wash the car, would you do it in your new shoes? No, why? I wanna keep them clean and protect them. Exactly. So that's the whole reason why your parents tell you to be in at 10, I'm trying to protect you. Now, 82% of the homicides occur away from home. 93% of the witnesses that, like I said, that I talked to, I always said, something told me to leave. 88% of the parents, first thing they tell me, I just told her not to go over there. I just told him to stop hanging with this guy. So it's amazing how, when I go and make these death notifications, the first thing the parents tell me after they break down is, I just told him. So these acts of disobedience cost them their lives. And 99, 92% of the time, it's some type of conflict that leads to these homicides. You don't have to sit up there and argue with folks, leave. Now, like we were talking earlier, exit strategies. If they're prepared for these high-risk situations and have an exit strategy already in place, they can't help but to pass the test. If you got the answer to the test, you can't help but to pass it. So what we do is we go over different exit strategies. Number one, hey, if you're with somebody that's talking about doing something foul, drugs, robbing, stealing, shooting something up, hold on, man, I left my phone, I'll be back. That's, everybody leave for a phone, or one I like to use, act like their phones ring and hold up, man, got it on silence. Oh, hey, mom. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot you had to go to work, I'm coming now. Everybody, look, everybody can use the mama excuse. So if you can use, I'm sick, I feel like I gotta, I'm about to throw up, to keep from going to school, you can use to remove yourself from the situation. I don't know what's going on, man. I'm gonna catch up with y'all later. So these are just different things that our kids can use to remove themselves from a situation. As a parent, these are things that we should be drilling our kids with. Just throw it to your kids, ask them, hey, if you went over to Tony's house and he had a gun, what would you do? And your child's gonna go, uh, 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 that's exactly what's gonna happen. So we can give them these exit strategies so they can practice them, rehearse them, have them down pat when they face these challenges. They're already prepared when it comes, you know? Same thing with the parties, as far as, you know, with the senior parties. I know a lot of times, that's when everybody wants to get the drink, get the drink. I got to say, nobody knows what's in your cup. You can get a cup of Coca-Cola, cup of 7-Up, and act the biggest nut like everybody else, and walk and drive off sober after that event. So these are just some of the things that we give the students, you know, practical tools to face peer pressure and prepare themselves against high-risk behavior. And also, we often talk, always talk about cases that they're aware of that happen right here in Shreveport, and other options that the students could have selected that would have saved their lives.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. I thank you, thank you so much. Before you leave, we have several commissioners who are on the board who would like to express their comments or their sentiments to you. But I thank you so much for that presentation. And I thought that it was advantageous that you deliver it to us as the commission instead of to one of our juvenile committees, which I'm sure that we will have more presentation and have more questions in the very near future from you. So I can't thank you enough for the service that you've already provided for Caddo Parish and that you still have the passion and the desire to continue the work. The first one is Commissioner John Paul Young.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you so much, Mr. Carroll, for being here.
Yes, sir.
I don't hear that kind of presentation very often, but I found it very targeted and direct for addressing crime prevention. We don't hear enough about crime prevention, we hear a lot about crime fighting. But if you reached a lot of people in Caddo Parish with your message, I think it would be huge for our city and our society to have kids know how to avoid danger. And I wonder, are you aware of the Harbor? Which is, so it's a building that the school board donated for the use of Volunteers for Youth Justice. And it's like a huge two-story building full of different offices, and a whole bunch of nonprofits are in there. And when kids get in trouble at school or when they have warning signs at school, they're referred there. And then they get all the different kinds of services that they might need to do better in school. Sometimes it's counseling, sometimes it's just uniforms, sometimes it's food. But I think you would be an amazing asset to have in that building. I think they have office space still, and I would love to put you in touch with the director there because they have a population of kids who, even if they're not ready, they need to receive your message. And I think that you also deliver it in a very compelling way. So we would love, we would love to get you connected with the Harbor and see if it's a good fit for your program.
Yes, sir.
And also, our chairman of the Juvenile Justice Committee is not here today, but I'll ask Madam President to refer you to that committee so that we can discuss it more. And we do funding for crime prevention and things like that at the Harbor already. And we would love to include you in that, in our next year of funding.
Yes, sir.
I would love to get you involved in the Harbor, I think that would be amazing.
Yes, sir, definitely.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Commissioner John Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Carroll, for coming down. It was a nice present, well, not a nice presentation, well-presented presentation.
Thank you.
Good content, well-thought-out, so thank you for your efforts there. I agree with Commissioner John Paul Young that the Harbor might be a good place to connect with. But I also wanted to ask about the school board. Have you spoken to Caddo Parish School Board? It seems like their students would be the best place to house this program.
Yes, sir. I've emailed a couple of times, a couple of phone calls, and no response.
Well, don't give up, keep trying to reach out to them. It seems like this would be a great service to our young people.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins, and I am working on getting him in contact with the proper people at the school board.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ron Carthay.
Thank you, Madam President. I too thank you, Mr. Carroll, for your presentation. Keeping it real and raw, okay, is what you did, and I really appreciate that. As previously stated, as you were talking, I was saying to myself, okay, this either need to be in juvenile justice committee or long-range, because the thing is, again, you have additional information that I'm sure you didn't have an opportunity to share with us today. And the thing is, is that we need to see the entire program. Because again, I think you have really put in the time and the effort for what you even just shared with us today. Our kids are hurting out there.
Yes, sir.
This past, the other night, I was at A.B. Palmer Park.
Yes, sir.
I viewed this 17-year-old young man.
Yes, sir.
And the thing is, it's still imprinted right here. And as I share with people all the time, I don't care who, what, when, where, how, that was somebody's child.
Yes.
Exactly.
And the thing is, again, if it was their child today, it might be your child tomorrow. And the thing is, if we could prevent one, one, from going through that again, and I must publicly say that we just gotta do better. That's the bottom line, we have to do better. And the thing is, as senior leaders, as elected officials, as whatever title you choose to put on yourself, we collectively, collectively, must do better for our young people. Our parents, our grandparents, our man down the street, lady down the street, at the church, wherever they were, they did it for us.
Yes, sir.
We owe them that.
Yes, sir.
And we just have to step up to the plate at this particular time. So again, I thank you for what you did. I'm gonna give you my card, because I,
Yes, sir.
You'll get in the door, don't worry about that, okay? I know our president is working on it, but you'll get in the door, so I'm gonna give you my card as soon as we get there.
Okay, great.
Cool, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carthor. Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, ma'am.
We will continue, um, cultivating this relationship and working on the goal to eradicate this crime, especially for our youth.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Okay, um, let's see, after, uh, Mr. Carroll's presentation, that is the end of our visitors for today's, uh, agenda and brings us to the next section, which is to consider adopting regular session minutes. And you do have your, um, in addition to your regular session minutes from September eighteenth, you also have the special session tax port of appeal minutes from September twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I have a motion by Commissioner John Atkins, and it's second, oh, I'm sorry, uh, that was motion by Commissioner Roy Barrel, and that was second by Commissioner John Atkins. Commissioner Barrel, would you like to speak on your motion?
I'm good.
Commissioner Atkins.
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Please vote.
All of the information, my board died.
Oh, Commissioner Everson, thank you.
And so, and you're voting in the affirmative?
Yes.
Yes, uh, uh, so your vote is yes, right?
Do we have another board available for Vice President Everson?
Okay, um, we, uh, can come see if we can get his work in, um, we may have a, another alternative. But, um, but that motion does carry, uh, with ten in support, none in opposition, and two absent, and, um,
Next item.
So that brings us now to, uh, and I'm sorry, that motion was, uh, just to be clear, that motion was to adopt the regular and special session minutes, wasn't it? Okay, just wanted to make sure the special session were intended to be included, because that's how we heard it. Um, okay, the next item is special resolutions. Under special resolutions, we have a number of items that are, uh, here in this section, though I believe we, there are ten items under this section, though I believe there are only two that are to be presented in person.
All right, I have a motion by Parliamentarian Victor Thomas and second by Commissioner Ron Carthor. Parliamentarian Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, Madam President, um, I'd like to inglobo and adopt, um, items eight point one, eight point two, eight point three, eight point four, eight point five, eight point six, eight point seven, eight point eight, eight point nine, and eight point ten, making special, um, concessions for any presentations that are here today and any of my colleagues that would like to make comments on their resolutions after we vote.
All right, um, you've heard the motion and the chair will second.
Madam Chair, may, may I be added to the special resolution for Wayne Waddell? I don't know if it's even possible to add it this late date, but I just saw that, thank you.
All right, um, okay, that was a request from Commissioner John Atkins to be added to the special resolution for Wayne Waddell and also Commissioner Roy Barrel. Okay? Commissioner Ron Carthor would also like to be added to that special resolution. And Vice President Ken Everson.
Madam President, if it would please the body, can I add all twelve commissioners to that?
All right, no one is in opposition.
If it pleases the body, is anybody not wanting to be on that?
All right. Okay, the ones that are present?
Thank you.
Thank you. If the other ones would like to be added at a later time, we'll revisit, thank you. All right.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I may, uh, there are several on here that I'm just seeing, uh, that I would like to be added to, uh, i.e. twentieth, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty birthday of United States Navy.
Okay.
Uh, I would also like to be added to Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Domestic Violence Awareness, Amer-, uh, Awareness Month.
Okay.
Uh, of course, we just said Captain Victor Green, and, uh, yeah, that's it for me.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, did you hear that?
I did.
Madam Deputy Clerk?
Thank you very much, I made those notes and we can get those done.
Thank you. Commissioner Grayson, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to be added to, uh, Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Domestic Violence Awareness Month, please.
Absolutely, and actually, I got your message earlier today requesting that, and I think you've already been added.
Thank you, so, thank you. All right, Commissioner Roy Barrel.
If I could be added to the two-hundred-and-fifty birthday, uh, if I could be added to the two-hundred-and-fifty birthday of the, um, United States Navy, um, Black Restaurant Week, Miss Helen Amin, I knew her, Breast Counsel Week, Domestic Violence, uh, Filipino Awareness Month, Wayne Waddell, and Miss Geneva Moore, who passed, recently passed away, one-hundred-and-ten years old.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no other commissioners on the board? All right, please vote. Vice President.
And Commissioner Everson, could you say your vote for?
Voting in the affirmative, yes.
There's a tablet right next to you. That one, check that one. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it looks like, uh, Commissioner, uh, John Paul Young is out of the chamber at the moment, okay? That motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, uh, and three absents. Um, and so at this point in time, it would be appropriate, um, I know that we have, uh, uh, people here today to receive, uh, special resolution of recognition for Miss Helen Amin.
Yes.
And also the Filipino Heritage, uh, Month. If there's any other presentations to be made today, we do have copies and can accommodate that, but those are the only two I'm aware of.
All right, we're going to start with, um, Mrs. Helen Amin. If you would, please stand.
Okay, if Miss Amin would make her way up, I will read this into the record. Uh, this is a special resolution, uh, of recognition for Mrs. Helen Amin, and it reads, whereas the Caddo Parish Commission seeks to recognize outstanding individuals whose selfless contributions to education, community development, and the empowerment of youth have had a lasting impact on the lives of residents of Caddo Parish and the surrounding region. And whereas Mrs. Helen Jewett Amin, along with her late husband, Mr. Wally Amin, has devoted decades of her personal resources to establishing and sustaining the Amin Scholarship Award Fund, uh, beginning many years ago to provide educational opportunities for African-American students in Caddo Parish, Bossia Parish, and in special cases, in, in special cases, out-of-state students. Whereas through her humility, generosity, and steadfast commitment, Miss Amin has ensured that countless young men and women have access to higher education by funding scholarships for students to attend accredited colleges and universities, supporting both undergraduate and graduate students, and addressing financial need to give every day, every student, the opportunity to succeed. Whereas the Amin Scholarship Award Fund distributes scholarships annually in conjunction with the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, Zeta Iota Chapter's yearly scholarship and award breakfast. And recipients are carefully selected based on academic achievement, college acceptance, personal essay, and community engagement, ensuring that students with the greatest potential are recognized and supported. Whereas Miss Amin's decades of charitable work, often carried out without seeking recognition, have created a legacy of educational empowerment, serving as a beacon of hope, inspiration, and opportunity for generations of African-American students, and have strengthened the social and educational fabric of Caddo Parish. And whereas the Caddo Parish Commission recognizes and applauds Miss Amin for her vision, leadership, generosity, and unwavering commitment to the betterment of youth through education, acknowledging that her dedication has transformed lives, provided opportunities, and inspired others to give back to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Caddo Parish Commission does hereby honor and commend Mrs. Helen Amin for her extraordinary contributions to education and her tireless efforts to provide scholarships for deserving students, recognizing her as a model of civic responsibility, generosity, and community leadership. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Miss Amin as a symbol of the commission's deep appreciation for her enduring service and commitment to empowering the youth in Caddo Parish and beyond.
Thank you so much, I am truly honored. And I really appreciate and love each and every one of you for your, the gesture of love that you've shown me here today. It gives me continuous encouragement to continue my quest for meeting the needs in our society, for our students of today. And I am so proud that for all these years, from nineteen-seventy to the present and the future coming, that I will continue to be able to save money each month for my children in Caddo, Bossia, and other parish, surrounding parishes, and other states also. We have, thus far, we have given five hundred thousand nine hundred dollars to our students. And we do it with love. And I would just like to, because of your generosity and your kindness, I know that I will continue to sacrifice, because it is a sacrifice. Yeah, but I, I, uh, give out of my check each month, twelve hundred dollars, so it, it's a sacrifice, but I do it, and I do it continuously. And I will continue to do that and hope that somebody will carry on after. I thank everybody for their, uh, support. And I appreciate, especially I appreciate also, I appreciate my family. I definitely appreciate y'all for the honor. And I appreciate my sorority. I have so many families that, uh, I just cannot name them all. So I really thank you, and I love you for this beautiful gesture to, to here today. Thank you.
It is indeed a blessing. Miss Amin, we got, we got a few people, they want, we want to extend some more heartfelt congratulations. We just want to say thank you, and this is just a token of our love and appreciation for everything that you have given. And I know that just a portion of what you share could not even be explained of the sacrifices that you have made um, for the organization, for these children, and we are very grateful for those seeds that you have planted in the ground.
Thank you.
And we do know and believe that this legacy will continue on. So thank you for being a great example.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I have Commissioner Ron Carthor.
Thank you, Madam President. It is indeed an honor as I sit here and look at the, not only sacrifice, but the commitment that you've made to young people throughout these United States of America. And as a Phi Beta Sigma to a Zeta Phi Beta, it is truly an honor for me to sit here and see what has happened over the years. Because again, we learn this very early on as we pledge what we're supposed to do, and it's not about ourselves, it's about others. And so I definitely appreciate everything you've done, doing, and going to do. So once again, thank you very much, so.
And thank you. You had to throw that in at the end, huh?
Okay. Commissioner Ken, Vice President Ken Everson.
Miss Amin, it's indeed a pleasure to see you again. The last time we met in person was at my dining room table, eating gumbo. You and Browala and my wife and I, and it was such a pleasure to have known Browala, United States Air Force veteran, astute businessman, a mentor. And the business that he was in, he was always given. He was in the pest control business, had major contracts, and he had a prison ministry, and he gave those individuals an opportunity to work with his company once they were released from incarceration. So he did make a, a great, uh, good impression on the lives of persons that needed a second chance. And also that five hundred and some thousand in scholarships, uh, my peanut pad has helped out in that too, remember? And we appreciate it, and I think also, uh, your sister was a, uh, we were classmates at Union High School, class of nineteen sixty-five. And, uh, you all have been stalwarts in the community from when you were coming up out in the Shady Grove area up to where you are now. And we don't expect anything less from you, so thank you and God bless you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Everson. Commissioner Roy Barrel.
Thank you, Miss Amin, it's great seeing you again and, um, being a part of Z Five B, who have been on for their scholarship nationwide, so it fits right in. And, um, my good friend, I, I miss, uh, Wally, uh, because Wally was my exterminator too. And, uh, also a good friend and advisor, political advisor. I've gone to him a lot for, for political advice over the almost thirty years that I've been in this business. So again, just keep up the good work and
Thank you, I will.
You're in our prayers.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Amin.
Thank you. I love you all.
Enjoy your day, we love you.
Thank you.
All right.
Did you say happy birthday?
No, I said, we love you.
Oh, yeah.
Enjoy your day.
Okay, that brings us now, um, to the next item, which is a, uh, presentation of a special resolution recognizing the Phil Am Association of the Architechs and the Filipino American Heritage Month. So if those representatives would like to make their way up?
All right, if you would, please stand.
And at this time, I will read this into the record. This is a special resolution recognizing the Phil Am Association of the Architechs and Filipino American Heritage Month. And it reads, whereas the Caddo Parish Commission is pleased to acknowledge events of significance that occur in the community and to recognize the organizations and individuals who are now and for a long time have been in the forefront of positive and worthy activities and deeds that accrue to the benefit of all. And whereas such an organization is the Phil Am Association of the Architechs, who will be hosting the ninth annual Filipino American Heritage Month Celebration Gala at the LSUS Ballroom on October fourth, twenty-twenty-five. And whereas the Phil Am Association of the Architechs was founded to celebrate, educate, and encourage Filipino American heritage to not only their members, but to the communities in which their citizens live and serve on a daily basis. And whereas the first recognized permanent Filipino settlement in the United States was in Saint Malo, Louisiana, in seventeen-sixty-three. Saint Malo, a fishing community which put in motion the economic, cultural, social, and other notable contributions that Filipino Americans have made in countless ways towards the development of the history of the United States. And whereas Filipino Americans have contributed greatly to the fine arts, music, literature, education, business, journalism, sports, fashion, politics, government, science, technology, and other fields which enrich the landscape of the United States of America. Now therefore be it resolved by the Caddo Parish Commission, meeting and due in regular session, that it does hereby welcome the celebration of and recognize October twenty-twenty-five as Filipino American Heritage Month in Caddo Parish, Louisiana, and treating all citizens of the parish to join in applauding this observance and in welcoming and honoring Phil Am Association of the Architechs's members and guests.
Thank you so much, I am Loretta Levitt, and these are my members of the organization. Thank you so much for recognizing the Filipino American History Month. Actually, we were, we were approved in two thousand nine. It was passed by legislation to have our own event for the whole month of October, under President Obama. In fact, there was an event in two thousand nine in the White House recognizing the contribution of the Filipino American and the world. And thank you again for supporting us. You know, it started with Commissioner Mario Chavis, who did the decoration five years ago, and then continued by Ron for the last three years. Thank you, Ron, for honoring our session, thank you so much. And my friend Roy Barrel, come a long ways, nineteen-nineteen.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you. Don't leave, come back. We have a couple of commissioners who want to say something to you.
Oh, yes.
Yes, please stay at the podium just a little while longer, thank you. Commissioner Ron Carthor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I know you have to leave shortly. But I just wanted to do this publicly because each year, I've been taking the proclamation and presenting it at the Filipino American Gala. And as I shared with Miss Loretta and the group that she represents, there's not enough people here in Louisiana, in Caddo Parish, that understand the contribution that Filipino Americans have made. As I continue to listen to the history throughout, over the last three years, in particular when I sit down and talk to Doctor, I think it's Gonzalez, and, uh, and he shared me the history behind the Filipino American, they have They have made, they are making a great contribution. There is so much history that we don't learn anymore, that's not shared anymore. And I beg anybody under the sound of my voice, go to Mr. Google. Go to Mr. Google and put in Filipino American. You'll be surprised at some of the interesting facts that you will find. And I also thank you all because, again, I see that the Filipinos first settled in Louisiana during the Spanish colonial period and contributed to the early development of the region. And they was here as early as the nineteenth century and established the first Filipino settlement in the United States here in Louisiana. That says a lot about who they are and the contributions that they've made. So again, go talk to Mr. Google when you leave here and find out about these great contributors to the United States of America, Louisiana, Caddo Parish. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carthor, for that educational sentiment. Thank you so much. Commissioner Roy Burrell.
Thank you, Loretta. We go way back, Madam Chair. You know, we were talking about trying to find out the different cultures in Louise, me and Shreveport and around the surrounding area. Loretta was one of the founders, along with myself, of the Multicultural Center of the South. And that goes a long way back. And she has been a dynamo since, and I'm still, you're probably still connected to it. I've kind of moved on. But you're still there, and it's so important because she's very, very focused on the culture of our, our area, and she's done a wonderful job. Thanks, Loretta.
Thank you. Thank you again.
You are welcome. Vice President Everson.
I just wanted to-
Ms. Loretta.
I just wanted to share for some of you that may not know, World War II, my father served in the Philippines. And he spoke highly as to relationships that he had while he was stationed in the Philippines. So we appreciate that also. And you always being great allies to the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
All right.
For your service, thank you.
All right. All right, Mr. Clark.
Okay, and I believe those are the only two presentations that we have today. There are a number of resolutions that will be presented this weekend, so we will add those names that were requested. And, and if there is nothing else, we can move forward.
Vice President Everson.
I'd just like to state that the resolution recognizing the two hundred and fifty year anniversary of the United States Navy will be presented to the Reserve Unit. But I also want everyone to know that we will not forget any military entity as to the things that they have provided to this nation. We appreciate, we recognize the anniversaries and anything that's related to our military. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Everson. In addition, I wore my pink today for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, but I always remind our colleagues that we do all of the presentations in our colors on our last meeting of this month. So please wear your pink and purple at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move on, since you just mentioned nations, if, if you don't mind, I could also like to just thank our Assistant Clerk, Michelle Nations, who happens to be both a breast cancer survivor and Filipino American.
Well, you stole my thunder for the next show, but that's fine.
I'm so sorry. You can always do it again. It's our anniversary tomorrow too, so.
Okay. Well, happy anniversary to the nations.
Okay, I'm sorry. That brings us now to Communicates and Committee Reports, where because we did not receive, because we did not, we're not able to have the Monday meeting, we do have the Administration Report first, followed by any responses that the admin might have to Commissioner request.
All right, and our CEO, our assistant is here. The, the second, the better half of the two in our CEO's absence.
Good evening, Commissioner. We have three, three things to mention. The next intergovernmental meeting is October twenty-fourth at eleven thirty a.m. at Independence Stadium. We will be having a broadband update at our next meeting, October twenty-third. We'll have information from both Comcast and AT&amp;T.
Will they be present?
One of them, I believe AT&amp;T will be present. Comcast has sent a relatively extensive email with information. And then to give you the juvenile detention numbers, there are currently thirteen children in juvenile detention. Four of them are seventeen-year-olds. Six of them have already been sentenced and are waiting OJJ to come pick them up. Fifteen youth are at CCC, and there are four hundred and twenty-three children on probation. And that concludes our report.
All right. Thank you, Assistant Administrator Walker. I do see Vice President Everson. Are you on for Communicates or Response? Okay, Communicates. Is there anyone on for Response to Administration? Seeing none. Thank you so much. All right, Communicates. Vice President Everson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask the Public Works Director and Administration if we could have our War on Leather Truck included in this year's Veterans Parade? If we could make that happen? Okay, thank you very much. Also, I'd like to mention that National Night Out was a very successful in District Twelve. I had the opportunity to visit six before it got too dark, and I didn't know where I was going. The attendance was very well, William Memorial, CME Church, Western Hills Estates, West Peak Homones Association, Timberline Homones Association, Golden Meadows Subdivision, and Deer Creek Subdivision. Very good turnout, and we thank the Administration for the information that you gave us to pass out and disseminate at those various venues. For those of you that may remember, at our last commission meeting, I think I showed you a video where a car was speeding at the intersection of Calderwood, Highway eighty, and in entrance to the Timberline Subdivision. Once again, just now, speeding the same thing, red tow-down telephone, electrical poles, all the power was out in Deer Creek, Colonial Heights, and Timberline Subdivision. And of course, one of my priorities is, at the legislature this year, I think I turned it into Ms. Jamison, is why we will not be allowed to have video speed enforcement cameras in Caddo Parish, where we can possibly prevent things of this nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Parliamentarian Victor Thomas.
Thank you so much, Madam President. As y'all know, my favorite thing to say, they say there's nothing to do here in Shreveport. But I always come to argue that point. One, I want to say I did have a great time at National Night Out. I was so glad to see all those in District Three get out and fellowship with their neighbors. And it was really good meeting those who I haven't gotten a chance to meet yet. So I really had a good time, especially it was a success for Downtown's first National Night Kickoff. Shout out to the DDA for putting that on. But I have a lot more things that you can get ready to write down because there are plenty to do here in Shreveport and all over Caddo Parish. The Fourteenth Annual Prize Fest will be held October the fifteenth through the nineteenth. I don't know if you're familiar with Prize Fest, but I have enjoyed this week-long celebration. This Prize Fest includes more than just film and, and music. It's a creative competition and festival that takes place here featuring film, food, music, and comedy. It kicks off with Food Prize on Wednesday, October the fifteenth, with its amazing culinary experience. It also has Comedy Prize on Thursday, October the sixteenth, and the Louisiana Film Prize, in which local films, which was crafted by local directors and people who came to Caddo, specifically to film here in Caddo. And that will be showing from October the sixteenth through the nineteenth. And as you know, Caddo Parish does present a fifty thousand dollar prize for the best filmmaker in that series. So we're really proud to be able to support that program, especially the Food Prize, Celebrity Chef Barbecue, which is going to be Friday, October the seventeenth. And Music Prize will be held October the seventeenth through the eighteenth, as well as the Battle for the Golden Fork, which is Saturday, October nineteenth. I know I just gave you a lot of things to do in Shreveport. So you can go to prizefest.com and be able to experience all those different things that you can try to catch during Prize Fest Week. On Sunday, October the twelfth, a special invitation to the Far End District. They're going to have a Fusion and Canteen Park presentation. If you're not familiar with that, that's on Texas Avenue, not Texas Street. That's an area that myself and Commissioner Burrell share. If you'll notice, they are really, really doing some great, amazing works to make that the Far End District an art space and a creative space. There's going to be art, music, and makers there from Sunday, October the twelfth, from four to seven. They have over thirty-four vendors that are going to be out there, live performances by poets and musicians, kids' activities, a junior art showcase, and mini food trucks. You're invited to come and experience the perfect fusion of art, music, and community spirit. Once again, that's Sunday, October the twelfth, from four to seven in the Far End District. More specifically, that's eighteen forty-four, Texas Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana. Also, this is the fifth annual, the Fifth Annual Black Restaurant Week will kick off October the twentieth through the twenty-fourth. That is a unique celebration that is going to highlight many cultural, many cultural experiences during that week. The Black Restaurant Week, once again, this is the fifth annual year in which it highlights, it's a social networking special which will bring together all different participating restaurants, chefs, partners, and community members. A lot of different restaurant owners will be showcasing their talent. I'm really proud to support not only Black Restaurant Week, but Three One Eight Restaurant Week as well, in which we make targeted efforts to try to boost our restaurants, bring awareness to them. A lot of us get into the habit of eating what we're used to eating. A lot of us get into the habit of cooking at home. But there are a lot of different restaurants that are in our community that are, that we'd love for you all to patronize. Even if you're not able to do it on a regular basis, please make a targeted approach to try to support these restaurants during this week. Not only that, but I want to say a special thank you to those men and women of the Fire Department. They were there on hand with a lot of the different, a lot of the different National Night Out. As we know, the Fire Department has gone through a lot recently, but they have not wavered in their commitment to public service. So I definitely want to say a special thank you to them. In a special moment of silence, this past week, we lost a lot of great local leaders, educators in our community. And I'd just like to have a moment of silence for them if you, if everyone will join me. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. Commissioner Grace Anne Blake.
Thank you, Madam President. I too, like Commissioner Thomas, always like to share how wonderful, all the wonderful opportunities we have here in Caddo Parish to get out and enjoy our community. And this past week, the National Night Out for my district was a good, a great success. I really appreciated the Shreveport Police Department and the Shreveport Fire Department and the City of Shreveport for hosting the Downtown Kickoff Event. It was really wonderful to get out and be with my fellow commissioners and just to shake hands with the people that every day are out enjoying the night out protecting our community. And I also would like to say thank you and congratulations to my team at Avalon Hair Salon. We're going to be celebrating this coming Tuesday, our twenty-seventh year of creating beautiful hair and careers right here in Caddo Parish. And I would like to invite everyone with the commission to come and enjoy. We're having an open house and meet my team that loves supporting the community and doing all things beautiful. And I also would like to recognize Pastor Charles Johnson, the KOK family in LSUS, for putting on the first Chicken and Blues Festival at LSUS and for hosting American Idol Season Twenty-three winner Jamal Roberts, one of my most favorite performers from American Idol. Was an absolutely incredible first event. There were, I believe, twenty-two hundred people that were there. It was a sellout for the fried chicken, and there were plenty of other booths that were there to help serve everyone. The music was wonderful. It was such a great, people dancing, family affair, and I'm looking forward to next year. And then I also want to share how thrilling it was to partake in the Over the Edge with Commissioner Thomas in raising money for the Fuller Center. And I hope that we get to have that event again. And I would really encourage everybody to be willing to do something like that to bring awareness for something so important in our community. And it was definitely very scary, very thrilling. I didn't realize that we would not be going down the building without somebody with us. And I learned a lot about myself, that I'm pretty much willing to do whatever it takes to help the community. And I'm proud that I didn't pass out. But it was really wonderful to see all of the people that came out to do that, and I really appreciated the support. And so.
Skydiving nets work.
I've done that twice. I'm willing, come on, let's do it. And anyhow, so I'm looking forward to the State Fair. While the gentleman was sharing all the information, I bought four tickets for the food experience. And so that's really neat to be able to access all of the VIP experiences that the State Fair is offering for us. And I also want to say thank you to Caddo Parish, everybody who made sure we had our handouts for National Night Out. Everybody really appreciated, thank you, Crystal, so much. Appreciated the information, and the children really appreciated the, the tickets for the admission to the State Fair, and that was really heartwarming. So thank you so much. Everyone have a wonderful October.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. Commissioner Roy Burrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of things here. I just wanted to acknowledge the destruction, the burning of the Shreveport Country Club facility over there in the old golf course. I happened to be out of town during that time, and, and we got some telephone calls saying that Shreveport was on fire. It was so big. And I understand it was about a hundred and seven years old, so it's a historical structure that we're going to surely miss. I had several, you know, political fundraisers there over the years. The second thing is, I wanted to, to thank Jeff and his staff for getting us those maps, although they were, you didn't have the information and you got them there at the last minute, but it really was a help to be able to put those streets in the National Night Out list in Commission Districts. No, I'm not, no, I can't make but two or three of them, but after I got that map, I was able to make at least, I know, six, which, which definitely helped. So I'm hoping that we'll get that.
Well, thank you so much. And just to give credit where credit is due, Mr. Stephen Walker in the Public Works Office is the one who really did a great job putting that together. So we, we worked with him, and he did a wonderful job getting it together. So we'll, we'll pass that along.
Let me give a shout out to Steve. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. First time around, it will be Commissioner Ron Carthor.
Thank you, Madam President. Real quickly, had an opportunity to visit a medical research agency here in Shreveport, and I forget the proper name of it, but there are some real great things going on here in Shreveport as far as research that has not necessarily hit the map as of yet. They're doing some real research in some areas. Also, you had an opportunity to see the Filipino American, the gala. Next year when it comes, I'm inviting as many of you all that can come. I mean, it is so well put together, and just the history and to look and see how they do things. It just really amazes me each year that I go, I learn more and more. I had an opportunity also to attend the Ayers Advisory Board Meeting, and they're looking at ways that they can actually get their young people out, not only employ, but also getting them into the community so they could learn how to give back as well. I also attend the meeting about Fathers on a Mission, or they call it FOM. And the thing is, the juvenile justice system is very involved in that and going to look at some things of how it can assist them and going forward. in going forward with the young people that they're working with. Also, the Southern Hill Business Expo was very much a success. And again, if you haven't been, please, please come out next year and look at it, because again, you, first of all, you get full, and you meet people you haven't seen in years, each and every year. And lastly, National Night Out. As Roy said a few minutes ago, I thank you, Jeff, for the way that you put the thing together. Even in my district, I actually had twelve different sites, and I was only able to make four of them because the unforeseen circumstance in my district. But the thing is, going forward, is that I will be contacting each email of the people that I was not able to attend and look forward to meeting them in any way that I can, on individual basis, as a group, whatever the case might be. And lastly, I would share with you at the Green Brook neighborhood. The next time they put an event on, I'm going to invite you all there too, because you're talking about a true family. They are still family, and they have something, I think, the end of May, the first of June, where people come from overseas, all over the United States, that grew up in Green Brook, and they all just get together, because again, all they talk is family, family, family. And they let the young people know that, hey, we are your family, whether we still live here or not. Do not make any mistakes that any one of us can assist you with. So again, I thank you for this opportunity.
All right, second time around, Vice President Everson.
Mr. Everson, if you would, schedule a Public Safety Committee meeting at our next work session in October, two thirty P.M.
I'll be glad to schedule it. I do believe we have a property standards hearing that day. So let me check real quick and see what time that is to make sure. It's at two o'clock? So would you rather, would it be okay?
One o'clock would be fine.
We did it at one o'clock, would that be okay?
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Second time around, Parliamentarian Victor Thomas.
Thank you, and I did in my haste to tell you all the things that are going on. I forgot to let you guys know about the twenty-twenty-five Walk to End Alzheimer's, which will be hosted at Louisiana Boardwalk. It's going to be Saturday, October the eighteenth at eight A.M. I'm really excited for twenty-twenty-six, as I will be co-chairing the Walk to End Alzheimer's with our president, Madam Stormy Gage Watts. So we're really excited about that, and we hope you guys can come out and help us walk to end this disease. Also, the Ronald McDonald House will be having its grand opening on October the twenty-fourth. From the parish is very proud to support that in its inception, and we're really glad that we're going to be getting one here locally. Also, this Saturday at ten P.M., Big Frieda will be in the Red River District. So make sure that y'all come out, once again, there's plenty to do downtown, and I believe you're next. Thank you, Madam President.
Second time around, Commissioner Grace Anne Blake?
Thank you, Madam President. I have to leave, I'm sorry I have to leave early this afternoon. But I wanted to say before I left that I would like to be added to Ken Everson's Resolution Forty-One of Twenty-Five, requesting United States Speaker of the House and the Fourth Congressional Representative Mike Johnson to invite Caddo Parish resident Ken Creft to perform a dramatic recitation before Congress and otherwise providing with respect thereto. And I appreciate Commissioner Everson for working with Mr. Creft to try to make sure we can get that to happen for him. I love listening to him speak, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Roy Burrell, second time around.
Thank you, just a final note, Madam Chair. We were to attend Brentwood Hospital Community Roundtable Discussion this morning on behavior health, behavior and mental health. There is a lot of exciting things going on over there at Brentwood. Health professionals from around the area was there. We are, we also talked about establishing a behavior health center for Region Seven. A lot of the surrounding parishes send their mental health people to Shreveport. And, and I know that they are trying to secure space and, and to serve as a regional hub for it. So that's something that hopefully we can be talking about in the future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. I think that will conclude all of the commissioners for communications.
Okay, and did we have a president's report today?
Oh, I'll pick through some of the things that were not said. A lot of those things were already on my notes, so I'll just begin by saying thank you to Caddo Parish Parks and Rec, to Caddo Parish Commission, to, I see, our Public Works Director was back there. I wanted to give him a shout out and to tease Mr. Ken about the war on litter truck already been in the parade. On National Night Out, they led the parade behind Calumet Fire Truck, and people got to see that we have declared war on litter in Caddo Parish officially, with the truck to go along with it. So thank everyone for their participation. To Animal Services was out there, brought a beautiful German Shepherd that was so friendly, and people got to engage with it and found out information of how to adopt it. So Director Samuel, I didn't see him out there, if he's out there, hey, thank you so much for coming out. Juvenile Services was there. There was so much resources available for the community that was out there at the National Night Out in District Seven, which happened to be at Morningstar, and our governmental liaison was in dual role. So we appreciate her being out there as well, and to our Communications Director, we appreciate all of the pamphlets that were available. Are You Caddo Ready?, my disaster booklet for the citizens, the QR codes, the door knockers, all of those things were great resources for the community. So thank you all for your support at the National Night Out. Kudos and prayers to the Shreveport Fire Department, as it was mentioned earlier, for their services and their incredible work that they did in trying to preserve a historical structure at the country club. That was a huge loss to our community, was hoping for better results for that, to be something that would be back on the tax rolls and something that would produce economic development for us. But unfortunately, the fire won that round. But we are just very grateful to the Shreveport Fire people who kept those surrounding neighbors safe during that fire, because it could have easily gotten out of control. So you have our thoughts and prayers as well are with you. And I want to encourage anyone who has any information to please share it with Crime Stoppers. You do not have to leave your name, just your information. And if you didn't know, they have an app that you can be absolutely anonymous and leave their information. But we want to make sure that everyone is held accountable for destroying that structure. I also wanted to mention that we have voting, is it, this weekend?
There are, there are some things.
That will be voting, it's not for me in some of Caddo Parish, so check to make sure there's closed primaries, all kinds of things going on. So make sure that you go to the Go Vote app to find out if you are to be voting for anything this weekend. Okay, and.
It was very quiet.
Yeah, it has been very quiet. I think that was every, I think everybody touched on everything else, so I'll leave it right there. Oh, I do have one announcement. I will be on a panel on Saturday at the new spot in your district, at the Vinyl and Books on Texas Avenue. Moms on the Move brunch will be held there from eleven A.M. to two o'clock P.M. Get your tickets, come out and support.
Okay, thank you so much.
Commissioner Burrell?
Just one final thing, I feel that I would be remiss if I did not, if I didn't not recognize again a good friend who passed away, Louisiana State Representative, former Louisiana State Representative, Wayne Waddell. I served with him for a number of years down at the state, and he was a very moderate individual in terms of his politics. And he also served as the director for the Louisiana State Exhibit Museum. And he made a great contribution to our community. So send condolences to his family.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, that brings us to a public hearing on zoning ordinances in cases where we do have one item today. And that is a public hearing for Ordinance Sixty-Five Sixty-Two of Twenty-Twenty-Five. That's an ordinance to amend Volume Two of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended to Caddo Parish Unified Development Code by amending the zoning of property located on the west side of L.A.R.E. Road approximately eight hundred and twenty-five feet south of East Florida Lucas Road in Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R-one-seven Single Family Residential Zoning District to C-one Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District and otherwise providing with respect thereto. That item is in District Nine.
All right, at this time, we will open for the public hearing on Ordinance Number Sixty-Five Sixty-Two. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against Ordinance Number Sixty-Five Sixty-Two? Seeing no one?
I will just briefly mention, there was somebody that was here earlier that had to leave in favor of it. He was part of the applicant, representing the applicant. And that brings us to, we have no public hearing on ordinances today, other than that, so we can move forward to considering the zone ordinance that we just had the public hearing for, that is.
Move to adopt, Madam President.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner John Atkins, and that was seconded by Ken, Vice President Everson. Commissioner Atkins, would you like to speak on your motion?
Just to be clear, we are moving to adopt Ordinance Sixty-Five Sixty-Two. I think I got ahead of the clerk on that. But yes, there's, the community is supportive of that, and we'd like to adopt it and move ahead.
All right, thank you. Vice President Everson? Okay. Parliamentarian Thomas, he was just on there, second in, okay, you got a second and a third, all right. Seeing no other discussion, please vote.
And that motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent. We have no ordinances, regular ordinances for final passage today, nor do we have any zoning ordinances for introduction. We do have some regular ordinances for introduction today. So today we'll be introducing Ordinance Number Sixty-Five Sixty-Three of Twenty-Twenty-Five. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Riverboat Fund and the Oil and Gas Fund to provide an additional appropriation for the Safe Summer Program and otherwise provide with respect thereto. The next item is the introduction of Ordinance Sixty-Five Sixty-Four of Twenty-Twenty-Five. That's an ordinance adopting the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Shreve Memorial Library for the year twenty-twenty-six, and that will have its public hearing on November sixth. The next item is the introduction of Ordinance Sixty-Five Sixty-Five of Twenty-Twenty-Five. That is an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Economic Development Fund to provide an appropriation for Christmas in Roseland and otherwise providing with respect thereto. That comes to you from a recommendation from the Economic Development Committee. Those were the items for introduction, and that brings us now to the consideration of adopting your work session minutes. These minutes just reflect the Monday meeting that had to be canceled.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Ron Carthren and a second by Parliamentarian Thomas. Commissioner Carthren, all right. Parliamentarian Thomas? Okay, seeing no other discussion, please vote.
Okay, and that motion carries, that's nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent. And brings us now to the consideration of resolutions, where you have three resolutions to consider today. The first is adopting Resolution Thirty-nine of Twenty-Twenty-Five. That's a resolution to authorize the Caddo Parish Administrator to direct and authorize the Louisiana State Mineral and Energy Board and the Office of Mineral Resources to accept nominations, advertise for, accept, and award bids, and execute all oil, gas, and mineral leases on certain mineral interests owned by the Parish of Caddo and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Motion, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say this item is in District Nine.
Okay, I have a motion by Parliamentarian Thomas and a second by Vice President Everson. Parliamentarian Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to englobo and adopt Resolutions Thirty-nine, Forty, and Forty-one, and welcome any commissioner who should speak on either of these things.
All right, okay. Have any other discussion, that was moved by Parliamentarian Thomas, and that was seconded by Vice President Everson.
Thank you very much.
I'll yield to any commissioner who has anything to say, and I see none.
Seeing no other discussion, please vote.
All right, that item carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent, that we have no old business today, so we'll proceed to the consideration of new business, where your first item to consider is the appointment of Ivy Melius, Ivy Young Melius, to Fire District Number Three, to fill the unexpired term of Susan Tuberville, who recently resigned. And that term is set to expire on December fourth of twenty-twenty-six.
All right, I have a motion by Vice President Everson and a second by Commissioner Ron Carthren. Vice President Everson, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, I'm nominating Ms. Ivy Y. Melius to the vacant position that was created by Ms. Tuberville resigning to the Caddo Fire District Three. She is ready, willing, and able. She had planned to come down on Monday, however, we had the situation with the electricity. But she did submit a letter and a brief bio of herself. So I would ask for your support in reference to her nomination, her appointment to that position.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Ron Carthren?
Yes, Madam President, I want to make a recommendation to englobo twenty-dash-one, two, three, four, five, six, and open to any questions that any member of the board might have at this time.
All right.
And adopt.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. That was a motion to englobo and adopt the rest of the appointments and reappointments. To which, which one you're stopping it?
I think he included the entirety of the new business section.
Okay, all right. And that was seconded by Parliamentarian Thomas. All right, would you like to speak on your motion?
Thank you.
Okay, would you like to speak as you second?
Um, no.
Okay, Vice, I'm sorry, Commissioner John Atkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If it's okay with the maker of the motion, could we back out the, my agenda doesn't have numbers on it, but these last two, the one point two million for Public Works and the fifty thousand for Reserve Trust Fund, I just want to under, I just wanted to spend a little time understanding those a little better. That, is that okay with the mover of the motion, maker of the motion?
I have no problem with that.
So you got to exempt those last two.
The modified motion would be the, to adopt the appointments and reappointments.
Yes.
Twenty point one through four.
All right, seeing no other discussion, please vote.
Okay, and that motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent. That brings us now to the consideration of appropriating one point two million from Public Works Road Fund for safety improvements and extension of Dawson Road project in the twenty-twenty-six draft budget. You also have an attached feasibility study.
All right. I have a motion by Vice President Everson and a second by Commissioner Ron Carthren. Vice President Everson, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, I'm pretty sure administration had distributed the feasibility study to everyone over the weekend, so hopefully you had a chance to peruse it. This is an issue that has been, I've been working on for almost ten years. And of course, one negative thing about this, two negative things, the possibility, the, one good thing out of that is there has not been any loss of life with having only one way in and out with the flooding that occurs in the Dawson Road basically since its history, whereas the people will only have one way of ingress, one way of exiting in the event of the flood, which I think within the last ten years, we've had three so-called one-hundred-year floods within that area. Also, the cost has gone up significantly. So therefore, the feasibility study came back favorable, and I don't think this should be delayed anymore. Our Public Works funds are ample, this is needed. We have some very aggressive industrial happiness that's going on in Resilient Technology Park and in that part of the area, east and west of Jefferson Page Road, east and west of Greenwood Highway eighty. And this is a very needed project, and I think it will open, I know it will open up the area for something that's much needed. for something that's much needed, enhanced fire and safety. Of course, we know all the oil and gas drilling. There's a lot of pipelines that's going in and around and surrounding those neighborhoods. God forbid any explosions of fires with those lines. And it does happen, where that would further exacerbate these people having only one way in and one way out. The development in the Resilient Technology Park is increasing. There's an issue which I heard reported in the Advocate, the digital newspaper, which I'm not at privy to speak about it because of the confidentiality development. However, in the event of an emergency with those particular facilities, AEP SWP Co. is located there already. In the event of an emergency, you have two-way ins and outs, whereas you would have safety and fire protection coming in from both sides. So this is just asking for 1.2 million to be dedicated in the 2026 budget so we can begin immediate, immediate work on this project before it become too cost prohibitive. So I'd ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Epperson. Commissioner Ron Carthren?
Thank you, Madam President. I too am in support of this, particularly after reading the feasibility study, the support that it has. And when I looked at the number of homes, it gave how much money will be collected over a period of time based on the number of homes, one house, 10 houses, things of this nature. So it just kind of made sense. And the thing is, again, we have to look at the actual, the dilemma for the people that are in this area. This is not the first time, as Commissioner Epperson has said, that this has come up. But the thing is, as we continue to kick this can down the road, the cost continues to get higher and higher. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Carthren. Commissioner John Atkins?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Walker, do you know, from my recollection of reviewing the feasibility study, it had $3.3 million budget associated with this project. We're currently budgeting 1.3. Do you know what we're planning to do with this 1.3 million in the early stages of this project?
I believe this is just one of the phases of the funding. And I believe that we are still looking at some of the properties that have to be cleared. They have to, the owners of those properties have not yet agreed to the movement, so we have to work through some of those. So there's still some work to be done on it. But this, I believe, brings us closer on the funding.
So isn't there a phase to resurface the road first, and then, and then to expand it to gain additional access?
I think the additional access is where the real money is. In terms of that, what we need to do is probably get Public Works in and get with finance to talk about the phasing and the steps that it would take.
I'm just trying to figure out where this, where this first phase of money would be spent.
As far as I know right now, we're talking about this is phasing money in. I don't know that this is necessarily going to be spent anytime soon. We've got...
Oh, I see. We're just kind of building a reserve? Is that, is that your understanding?
That's my understanding.
If I may address a question to, I guess I have to address the question to the President.
You can, if, if the sponsor of this allocation would like to address it.
Of course it is. I think for anyone that's been down here in the length of time, you should be familiar with the process. This is a start of it, and of course, the existing road will have to be upgraded. We know all the oil and gas drilling has wreaked havoc on the road as it exists at this present time. It's not a day that goes by that six, seven, eight, or 10 service truck goes down and just deteriorated that particular road. So this is a process just like any capital project that we undergo. It comes in phases, plain and simple. But let us not get caught up in figures and costs. The main thing is our responsibility to take care of the welfare and the safety of our citizens. And this is an issue that is first and foremost.
Thank you. I think I have the floor. Thank you, Madam President, if that answers my question.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Thank you, Vice President Epperson. Seeing no other discussion? All right, please vote.
Actually, I'm sorry. I believe Attorney Frazier?
I'm sorry. I don't, I didn't see her on the board. Oh, there's no photo. It's over there in the corner. I'm sorry. I apologize, Attorney Frazier.
I'm sorry for interrupting. I thought maybe that was the case, and I wasn't sure if she meant to or not.
Yeah. It's just a white block over here, and it's nothing there, but her name is at the bottom.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I just wanted to make it clear for the public that may be watching. What this is doing is requesting that administration include this in the budget that's being presented for you all's vote on December 4. You will have to vote on the actual ordinance for this on December 4.
Thank you.
Thank you for the point of order and clarification, Attorney Frazier. Commissioner Crackman?
Yeah, do we have any kind of letter of support or opposition from AEP? Because I know last time it came out back in November, they sent us a letter of opposition. Commissioner Epperson, anybody?
A who?
AEP. Michael Corbin from AEP sent us a letter of opposition in November, when he's something, last year.
I'm not familiar with it.
Point of information, I think they just inquired about where the location of the road will be in terms of their property. That was, that was, I think, one of the main issues that they inquired about.
Let me see, real quick, I promise.
Commissioner Atkins?
Thank you, Madam President. I share some of the concerns of Mr. Crackman, Commissioner Crackman. But I think if we're just phasing money into a budget, and it's a multi-year process, you know, we have, we'll have plenty of time to work, work through some of those issues with AEP SWP Co., I believe. And there's some other, as we all, as many of us know, there's some other developments out there that might come into play as well.
And if I may, I do recall, I think Commissioner Crackman's correct, there was some concern by AEP that had to do with the placement of the road. I think there's been quite a bit of development in that conversation where that, that may change. And I think between now and the ordinance vote, we'll need to get more of that information to you.
But again, we're just voting now to put some money in the budget. We're not looking to spend it right now. So we've got some time to work through all that.
Additionally, just as a point of information, while I don't know their position, the SWP Co. representatives did reach out and say that they had intended to attend Monday, and when those meetings were canceled, they said they would be unable to be here today. So I don't know what their opinion was, but I do know that they were planning to attend initially.
All right, please vote.
Okay, that motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent. And that brings us now to considering authorizing the administration to spend up to 50,000 of funding from the Reserve Trust Fund's emergency repair funding.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Carthren and a second by Parliamentarian Thomas. Commissioner Carthren, would you like to speak on your motion?
Thank you, Madam President. As you can see, I'm axing that $50,000 for funding from the Reserve Trust Fund for emergency repair, because what has happened in several districts within the inner city particularly, there are numerous people that have had repairs needed from the last true emergency. And again, even though it has been some time, what's going on, they have not been able to either fix the repairs or have the funds to actually do the repairs. But the great thing about it is that it will be vetted by legal prior to us even spending a dollar going forward.
All right. Seeing no other discussion?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say that I support Commissioner Carthren in this effort, much like I supported Commissioner John Paul Young. We do have an emergency, a housing emergency in our area. I support anything that's going to help us repair or provide funding towards strengthening the stock of homes that we have in our community. As he stated, a lot of people in our community are not able to bounce back from these repairs, from these storms. As we know, we also have an insurance crisis here in Louisiana. So I want to thank him for bringing this information up. And I want to thank administration for addressing some concerns that I have had offline regarding this. And I look forward to working with you and others in the future to try to address these issues. So thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a substitute motion to authorize the administration to spend up to $100,000 for the same purpose.
A second by the chair?
Okay.
Would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, very briefly. As Commissioner Carthren was talking, I was imagining a very large house that just had a tree removed from the middle of it. It is completely uninhabitable and still hasn't been torn down, and that is definitely going to be its fate. And I think that it probably is going to cost a little money to do it, and I would like to have the opportunity to present this to my neighbor and say, maybe we could get your house torn down for you. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, please vote.
Okay, thank you. And that motion carries with, I believe it's eight in support and none in opposition, but four absent. And that brings us now to communiques and committee reports. And we do have an item that is specifically attached here today. Commissioner Epperson, in response to some requests about, some discussion about nonprofit, nonprofits recording...
I'll get it.
Okay, so thank you. Just wanted to make sure you knew it was attached there.
As a member of the Caddo Community Action Agency Board and the Vice President, just wanted to present to the full commission the audit, our recent audit report. Just want to give you a brief history. Caddo Community Action Agency started off as CAPCAP in 1965, $35,000, and three employees. Today, they are 400 employees, about 18 million-dollar annual expenditures, and the assets of that organization are about 37 million. Doing a very good job. They also help in conjunction with the commission as far as emergency services. They provide assistance to people that, that homes have been burned. They have furniture and food storage and clothes lockers. They also assist us during disasters, whereas we had the flooding over around the Wells Islands, Wells Islands area some years back. They are familiar with the process of clearing people that are in needs as far as applications and things, energy assistance, water, as well as electrical assistance. So, so many things. And they also administer the Head Start program on behalf of this agency. So if any of you would like to know more about them, please check this audit out. And the doors are open at Caddo Community Action Agency at any of their centers. You don't have to call in advance. There's nothing to hide if you want to walk over to a center, and you follow through the security protocols. You're welcome to come in the classrooms and see what they doing at inner center. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I don't see any other commissioners on the board to speak. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, that brings us to some comments later rivals, where we have no requests.
Move to adjourn, Madam President.
All right. Now, I heard a move by Commissioner Ed Lazarus and second by Parliamentarian Thomas.